Please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Savi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Garrison.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present at this time. If all guests, colleagues, and staff could please rise for the invocation, Counselor Flaherty will introduce our clergy for the day. I ask everyone to remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm pleased to introduce Reverend Steve Ayers, who has served as the vicar of the Old North Church since 1997, and also as the Executive Director of the Old North Foundation since 2012. Victor Ayers was ordained as an Episcopal priest in 1980, and has served parishes in Missouri, New York, and Massachusetts. He's an undergraduate, has an undergraduate degree in comparative religion from Hamilton College, and a master's in divinity from the Episcopal Divinity School, and a master's in urban policy from Tufts University. At Old North Church, Vicar Ayers is responsible for the management and preservation of the historic site, and many folks know he led the effort to get federal changes in the federal preservation policy to allow active religious institutions to receive federal preservation grants, which led the way to the restoration of the church's original windows. He also launched the Old North's Historic Chocolate Program, which many folks here will be familiar with. And most recently, Vicar Ayers commissioned an in-depth study into the entanglement of the Old North parishioners and the colonial trade of enslaved persons, and recently revealed results that are leading to a comprehensive overhaul of Old North's educational programs. He lives in Bunker Hill. He's a constituent of our district colleague, Counselor Lydia Edwards in Charleston, with his wife Lisa and son Matthew. And at the end of this year, he is retiring from Old North Church after over 20 years of service to the church and to our city. So on behalf of the City Council, I congratulate Reverend Ayers and wish him and his family the best, and welcome him to deliver this afternoon's invocation. Steve Ayers.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, Council President Campbell, and esteemed City councilors. I'm honored to join with you in prayer for a final time during my tenure at the Old North Church. The Old North Church has been looking over the Shawmet Peninsula, Boston Harbor, and the mouth of the Charles River for almost 300 years. 240 years ago, two members of Old North Church signaled the beginning of the Revolutionary War by hanging two lanterns in the steeple to signal that British troops were marching on Lexington and Concord by way of the Charles River. I have had the privilege of leading the Old North Church for the past 22 years, greeting hundreds of thousands of visitors annually, while providing free field trips to Boston public school groups. As civic and political leaders, we share the responsibility of promoting patriotism and encouraging informed civic engagement. Boston has a unique role in promoting American values of freedom and liberty, given our historic role in launching the American Revolution. The Old North Church has a unique place within Boston's history, given the evolution of the understanding of freedom during Old North's 300-year history. Old North was founded by merchants and sea captains, many of whom engaged in the trade of enslaved persons. The two lanterns hung in Old North's steeple on April 18, 1775, launched the Revolutionary War that threw off the yoke of King George Tierney, and led to the establishment of democracy in the United States of America. In his 1860 poem "Paul Revere's Ride," Henry Wadsworth Longfellow turned Old North Church into a symbol of freedom, as Longfellow rallied support for the Union cause of freeing slaves in the American South. As councilors and political leaders, you have the opportunity and responsibility to use Boston's revolutionary history to pull together an increasingly divided nation, whose modern fault lines parallel the fault lines addressed by Longfellow in 1860. Again, we find ourselves in the hour of darkness and peril and need. My prayer today is that you will begin to plan for the upcoming 250th anniversary of the birth of our nation. That celebration should begin here in Boston in five short years, in April of 2025. The historic sites along the Freedom Trail yearn to partner with city and state political and civic leaders to use this major milestone to reinforce the civic and spiritual values that unite us as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So let us pray. Almighty God, Creator and Governor of the universe, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Boston the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Inspire Boston's mayor and city councilors to reach back into our secular and religious history to celebrate the symbols of freedom and liberty that can unite all of us as citizens of this great nation. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think our colleague Lydia Edwards has a presentation. Stay with us, Vicar.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just wanted to present the citation on behalf of the city of Boston, and our city councilors, again thanking Reverend Ayers for his incredible work and dedication to our community, to preserving our history, and even tackling the difficult conversation of dealing with our unique history of folks who were enslaved, and making sure that we recognize that as part of our growth, part of our history, and understanding who we are as a city. So I wanted to present this citation to Reverend Ayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lydia. I certainly enjoy working in one part of your district and living in another part of the district. And I'm not going anywhere, so I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much for this recognition, and please all of you continue the good work that we try to do to teach our history in a responsible and deep fashion to promote the values that we all hold dear. Thank you very much.
All right. So I wanted to acknowledge an incredible award and recognition for one of our local schools and the leadership there. I'm thrilled to be honoring the Harvard Kent Elementary School, their principal Jason Gallagher. I believe Counsel President is an alum of Harvard, Harvard Kent, and the teachers for winning $100,000 from Edvesters in their investment in local schools. A little background about the Harvard Kent and what makes it so special. The Harvard Kent student population is uniquely diverse within Boston public schools. The community is racially diverse, with nearly equal numbers of Latino, Asian, Black, and Caucasian young children, young people represented in the student body. Over half of the student body are English learners, and a quarter are students with disabilities, and more than two-thirds are economically disadvantaged. The Harvard Kent serves the largest population of students in public housing in the entire Boston Public School District. Principal Gallagher and his amazing group of teachers have improved in literacy and math, while have improved the students' literacy and math, while also narrowing achievement gaps. The Harvard Kent was recognized for exceeding performance targets set by the state. One in 14 BPS schools do so, did so in 2019, and one in four BPS schools are to do so in the next, there are one in four of the BPS schools to do so two years in a row. The Harvard Kent has maintained a culture that is both safe and welcoming for students and supports the unique needs of all the learners. They received their award for their inclusion curriculum, creation of a climate-ready team, and has risen in their accreditation in the last four years under Principal Gallagher's leadership. It is my honor to highlight their work, celebrate their successes, and present this citation to them here at the Boston City Council. So I'd like to invite Principal Gallagher to say a few words.
Just quickly, I want to thank Counsel Everett for all her support. Since she's been our counselor, she's been to the school many times, and is always supportive of our families and our students. This word really belongs to our families, our students, and our teachers, many of whom are here right now, but most of whom are back at school teaching right now. And also to give a thanks to the City Council for everything you do to make sure we have the resources we need to do our jobs well. This is a great honor, and thank you for this opportunity to be here today.
I invite my colleagues to come up and take a picture while we present this citation. Did any of the teachers want to see?
No.
No? None of the teachers wanted to see?
Nope.
No? Okay. So we're gonna stand and hold this, and we're gonna take some pictures. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't see either.
I didn't see either.
You too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
I didn't see either.
I didn't see either.
You too.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Okay.
Baker. Okay.
I just want to quickly acknowledge we're joined by electeds. First of all, excuse my voice and throat, sore throat, but I want to acknowledge our District Attorney for Suffolk County, Rachel Rollins, is in the building. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And sitting next to her is State Rep. Liz Miranda. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And our former colleague Counselor Jackson, who's come back to the building. Thank you for being here, Tila Jackson. And I know that Rep. Holmes also has a representative of Devon is here. Who am I missing? Oh, Nika is here, State Rep. Nika. Thank you so much for being here. And I'll try to acknowledge folks as they come, but we always want to acknowledge electeds. We appreciate you guys being here. I'm gonna go through just a couple of items, and then I think we may take something out of order, just to allow for folks to be able to participate in a conversation, and then go about their business. Before I do that, I want to acknowledge, Mr. Clerk, if we can amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Baker is here.
Yes.
And I'm going to go on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Let's see. We're gonna pull. At this time, colleagues, I would like to pull out of order of today's agenda, Docket 0315. Any objections to pulling Docket 0315 out of order to allow for some folks who are in the room, particularly some of our electeds, who have to go on to other business, for us to discuss that at this time? Great, seeing no objections. We will go on to, or start with Docket 0315, which is under reports of committees. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Wish to pull Docket 0315.
Oh, but actually, before you do that, Mr. Clerk would like to read it into the record. Thank you.
Sure.
Docket number 0315, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 6, 2019. Docket number 0315, An Ordnance Establishing Equitable Regulation of the Cannabis Industry in the City of Boston submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Rise to speak on Docket 0315. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing back on March 19 of 2019, and a follow-up working session on June 4, 2019. Just ask for your indulgence that there, it's been a long process, and there's approximately 20 amendments that have to be read into the record. So as we're all familiar, this is an ordinance that would create a cannabis board and the Boston Equity Program, first of its kind, led by the efforts of our colleague, City Councilor Ken Janey. The proposal establishes qualifying criteria for equity applicants, outlines application requirements for cannabis establishment applicants, and establishes criteria for licensing. At the public hearing and working session, the committee heard robust testimony from members of the administration, industry representatives, and other stakeholders, as well as other members of the public. In both sessions, the committee discussed the need for equity, transparency, accountability, and predictability in the regulatory process. Testimony throughout the legislative process focused on a few central themes: the need for an independent cannabis board, current barriers for entry into the industry, expanding the criteria for equity, for the equity program in the areas of disproportionate impact, setting aside a certain number of licenses for equity applicants, the importance of fair and transparent community host agreement and licensing process, and the funding for the equity applicants, among other topics. Jerome Smith, Chief of Civic Engagement, and Alexis Kuchir, Director of Emerging Industries, provided testimony on behalf of the administration. Mr. Smith provided testimony that indicated the city is committed to providing assistance to equity applicants, and that the administration will strive to have, have up to one-half of the licenses for equity applicants, and that they did not support the Independent Cannabis Board because it would create another level of bureaucracy. Ms. Kuchir offered comments about the city's equity goals and licensing process in the current applicant pool. Based upon the hearing and the working session, changes to the definitions section, the criteria for eligibility as an equity applicant, residency requirement, composition of responsibilities of the Boston Cannabis Board, and the licensing requirements are recommended. The amendments are as follows: technical change in the sixth whereas clause to spell out the words, quote, "Massachusetts general laws," end quote, "code of Massachusetts regulations," end quote. The inclusion of additional terms in definition section 8-13.2 to reflect the terms used in the state law. The new terms are, quote, "area of disproportionate impact," quote, "close associate," quote, "controlling person," quote, "investor," quote, "licensee," quote, "marijuana transporter." The deletion of the term "marijuana delivery only real retailer," end quote. Section 8-13.3 subsection 2 is amended by adding the words, quote, "arrest for," end quote, quote, "between the years of 1971 and 2016," end quote, end quote, "manufacturing or cultivation," end quote. In order to allow a person with past arrest to qualify as an equity applicant, in addition to a conviction for the possession, sale, manufacturing, or cultivation of marijuana between the years of 1971 and 2016, and deleting the term, quote, "trafficking," in other words, "married to," end quote, this section is further amended by adding the words, quote, "who has been a resident of Boston for the past five years." Section 8-13.3 subsection 3 is amended by increasing the residency requirement to seven years from five years. Section 8-13.3 subsection 4 is amended by adding Asian descent as a category to that subsection 4, now stating a person who is Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, or of Asian descent. Section 8-13.3 subsection 5 is amended by making the annual household income requirement at or below 100% of the area median income by deleting the words, end quote, "400% of the federal poverty level," end quote. This change recognizes the economic situation in Boston. Section 8-13.3 is amended by adding the subsection 6, which establishes certification by the Cannabis Control Commission as an economic empowerment applicant, as one of the criteria to determine eligibility as an equity applicant in Boston, and is further amended by adding, quote, "and is a resident of Boston for at least one of the last three years," end quote, after the word, quote, "applicant," end quote. Section 8-13.3 is further amended by adding a paragraph that requires the Office of Emerging Industries to establish a Boston cannabis equity program, to offer services to equity applicants, which include technical assistance with business operation, technical assistance recruiting employees, guidance through the application process, technical assistance with legal compliance, accounting and tax preparedness, best practice for operating, operation in the marijuana industry, technical assistance with store security, and technical assistance identifying capital, vendors, and raising funds. A new provision is added at the end of section 8-13.3 that requires equity applicants and licensees to meet the conditions established under the ordinance for equity eligibility in order to be eligible for benefits under the Boston Cannabis Equity Program. This new paragraph gives the Office of Emerging Industries jurisdiction over the Boston Cannabis Equity Program. This is a change from the original docket, which gave the responsibility to the Boston Cannabis Board. A new sentence is added at the last sentence, which states, quote, "The City of Boston shall maintain an equal or greater number of equity applicant licenses to licenses who do not qualify as equity applicants," end quote. Section 8-13.4 is amended by striking the original language in its entirety and replacing with the new provision that requires the mayor to establish a cannabis board. Section 8-13.5 is amended by striking the original paragraph in its entirety and replacing with the following sentence, quote, "Any persons or entities seeking to operate any type of adult-use marijuana establishment shall require a local license issued by the City of Boston," end quote. Section 8-13.6, applicant requirements, is amended to require the applicant submit the names of the controlling persons or close associates, in addition to business owners and investors, and the language provides clarification that the mailing address of the property owners be included. Section 8-13.7 relates to the community outreach, host community agreements, and is amended by striking the first sentence in the original docket and replacing with the following first sentence, quote, "The city shall hold at least one community meeting on the applicant near the proposed location of the establishment," end quote. Section 8-13.7 is further amended by striking the last paragraph in the original docket, replacing with a new paragraph that includes the language that requires collaboration with the district city councilor, and requires involvement by the district city councilor by submitting a letter of support, non-support, or non-opposition. Section 8-13.8 establishes criteria for the board. That is amended by adding a new second sentence that expressly states that the licensees comply with the laws and regulations of the city and state. The criteria includes the following changes from the initial filed docket. Applications shall be evaluated by a percentage scale based on the applicant's diversity and inclusion, weighted at 25%, employment plan, weighted at 20%, community feedback and public support, weighted at 20%, location, safety, and security, weighted at 20%, parking and transportation plan, weighted at 15%. This section is also amended to provide further detail and description to each criteria. Section 8-13.9 relates to the fees and amends the language from the original docket by deleting the term, quote, "package" in the first sentence and adding the new sentence as the last sentence in that paragraph, which allows the board to establish a reasonable fee in conjunction with the annual renewal of the license. The second paragraph in that original docket has been deleted. Section 8-13.10 is amended to combine inspections and enforcement under the same section, gives jurisdiction to the Inspectual Service Department and the Boston Police Department to inspect establishments and ensure compliance with state and local regulations. The originally filed docket did not include the police department. That language has also been added, including board notification of violations. Section 8-13.11 establishes the Boston Equity Fund, which will be administered by the Boston, where the Office of Emerging Industries to support equity applicants and licensees. The original legislation did not include the Boston Equity Fund, which has been administered by the Office of Emerging Industries. However, the need for funding to establish a successful equity program was discussed at the hearing and the working session. The amended version includes a sunset clause that includes the following language after the words, quote, "HCA review until 2024 or upon the Boston Equity funding reaching $5 million, whichever occurs first." Section 8-13.12 relates to the conditions and validity of the licensees and includes a technical change in the first sentence to, quote, "host community agreement" from, quote, "host community agreement," and requires that an establishment receive a final license from the Cannabis Control Commission and receives a license from the Cannabis Board within 12 months. That requires that licensure with the City Cannabis Control Commission remain valid and current. Section 8-13.14 relates to the revocation and expiration, and adds a new provision after the first sentence that requires the board to publish and post electronically a written policy that clarifies the business activities or business practices that may be subject to a license holder to scrutiny, changes to their license, or license suspension, and gives the board discretionary authority to update the policy. Section 8-13.4 is further amended by adding two sentences at the end that state each license expires annually after initial issuance, and the board must renew the license annually. Section 8-13.5 relates to the establishment of an online registry and places requirements on the board to maintain such registry. That includes also certain information to increase transparency by disclosing applicants as well. Changes to this section include the following. In the first sentence, the words "as maintained" are added, as well as a new provision is added in the first sentence that requires the online registry to include, quote, "applicants and licensees under this section, the applicant or licensees' current status in the approval process, any close associates, any controlling person, or any investors in the business, any management agreements agreed to into." Adds a new second sentence in section 8-13.5 that states the registry shall include all currently licensed applicants as well as all pending applicants. Therein lies the 20-plus amendments. Passage of Docket 0135 in its amended draft will establish an equity program at the local level, establishes a criteria for licenses to ensure quality and fairness, establishes a mechanism for funding to assist small businesses, establishes standards and best practices for businesses, recognizing community impact and involvement, strengthens the residency requirements and standards, and provides transparency throughout the creation of the registry. Based on this, as chair, I'm recommending that it ought to pass in a new draft, and as chair, I'd like to note that this amended draft is the result of months-long, of a months-long legislative process, of which many in this room, and as well as the administration, participated. Many colleagues, many stakeholders, many members of the public, their input, their valuable input was taken seriously, and as this industry continues to grow in our Commonwealth and our city, it is imperative that we acknowledge those who are disproportionately impacted and allow them to share in the growth, and that our policies allow for that growth as well. And so I'd be remiss, through the chair, if I didn't recognize the great work of the lead sponsor, our colleague, City Councilor Ken Janey, the hours that she's put in on behalf of this issue, working with advocates and leaders across the city on behalf of this body, and working together cooperatively in partnership with the administration to put a document. And I always like to say, like, not every sort of ordinance is perfect. I think this is sort of a first step, case of first impression, if you will, in the Commonwealth, but particularly in the capital city here in Boston. I'm sure that as we move forward and as this rolls out, working closely with the lead sponsor and, and members of this body and administration, there may be sort of tweaks along the way, but this, I think, is a very good first step of sort of codifying and putting on the books something in Boston that is tangible, people can understand, it's predictable, and we could now start to roll out opportunities for those, particularly those who are disproportionately impacted, but for anyone, quite frankly, that wants to get involved in this industry. So through the chair, I'd like to offer the lead sponsor an opportunity to be heard on all of those great work here, and at the appropriate time, would like to move for passage in a new draft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Let me also take this time to thank you for your support throughout this process. It really meant a lot to me. Thanks to the committee chair, Flaherty, for his and his team. Thanks to all of my colleagues. Each of you has contributed in some way. I also want to thank Counselor McCarthy for refiling this hearing order with me back in January. If you recall, I had a hearing last fall, but we had to follow that up, and we refilled in January. I especially want to thank our former colleague, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, as she has been a shining example of how to lead with love, equity, and justice. I want to thank Mayor Walsh for his support and his collaboration. It has been a long journey over the last nine months since I first introduced this legislation back in February. I am proud that the mayor and the council are taking this very important step forward. I am proud that the mayor and the council are taking this very important step forward together to ensure equity in our local licensing process. I also want to thank the mayor's team for all of their work during negotiations. I want to extend my gratitude to the council's central staff, especially Christine and Carrie. I have to thank my own incredible staff, who are all here with me today. And I especially want to highlight the numerous and valuable contributions of my former Policy and Communications Director, Noah Coolidge. I hope you're watching, Noah. I can't thank you enough. Throughout this process, I was in touch with a number of municipalities, including the city of Cambridge, Councilor J.T. Scott of Somerville, Council President Justin Hirst of Springfield, and Mayor Nicole LaChapelle of East Hampton. Thank you for your willingness to share ideas and for your commitment to promote equity. I am eternally grateful to Shaleen Title of the Cannabis Control Commission. Thank you for being a guiding light toward equity and for always being available and for always taking time to speak with me throughout this entire process. You have been truly amazing. I also want to thank the entire commission, including Chairman Stephen Hoffman, for meeting with me during this process. I also have to thank the many activists, advocates, entrepreneurs, and residents who have all been involved in this process. Your input and participation in the numerous hearings and working sessions and community meetings has been so incredibly important to this process. Thank you for your contributions to this important piece of legislation. Today is significant. On November twentieth, exactly one year ago, the first two recreational shops were given permission to open in Massachusetts. And one year later, dozens of stores are now open across the Commonwealth, and so far, they have generated $364 million in sales. That's $664 million in one year. One more million dollars, and that would be $1 million per day. It is clear that this is a multi-billion-dollar industry, and that's billion with a B. And it's imperative that we move forward in a manner that creates meaningful opportunities for those who are disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, so that they can own their own companies and create good-paying jobs in their own communities. Thank you. And, and while dozens of stores have opened, not one of those stores that opened in the last twelve months has an economic empowerment status. Not one of those stores that opened in the last twelve months is owned by a company that is majority people of color. And no stores have opened in Boston to date, but that will soon change. When we began this journey last fall, it was important to recognize and ground ourselves in the reality that poor communities of color, specifically people from Black and Latinx community, have been criminalized for cannabis use and possession disproportionately for decades. This has caused economic devastation, family separation, and emotional trauma due to mass incarceration. As we know, Massachusetts approved question four, which legalized marijuana in our state back in 2016. It passed overwhelmingly in Boston with close to sixty-three percent of voters in support of the measure. According to the state law, Boston will have a minimum of fifty-two cannabis businesses. The legislature passed chapter fifty-five of the Acts of 2017, an act to ensure safe access to marijuana. This act requires the development of procedures, and I'm quoting, "procedures and policies to promote and encourage full participation in the regulated marijuana industry by people from communities that have previously been disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement, and to positively impact those communities," end quote. While Massachusetts was not the first state to legalize marijuana, we are the first state to mandate equity. As I have stated since we began this process a year ago, we need to make sure that communities that have been locked up are not locked out of the opportunity to build wealth and break the cycle of generational poverty. Given the massively disproportionate arrest rates and the staggering wealth gap in Boston, we must ensure equity at the city level. With both our mayor and the council emphasizing the importance of equity, it is my hope that we move forward and pass this ordinance today. We have heard repeatedly for the need for greater clarity and transparency, despite best efforts. Critics have often described Boston's current process as vague and opaque. But today, with this ordinance, we have the opportunity to create a process that promotes equity, clarity, transparency, and accountability. This ordinance prioritizes small companies with diverse ownership from communities impacted by the war on drugs, including those with economic empowerment status and those who are eligible for the state's social equity program. Again, this ordinance prioritizes small, local companies with diverse ownership from communities disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. This ordinance includes a number of components, the equity program. And the evidence is clear. Without intentional focus on equity, the status quo will prevail, and larger, wealthier companies will lock out smaller, diverse companies from our communities. To qualify for the equity program, fifty-one percent of your company would have to meet three out of six criteria. The criteria are very much aligned with the state's language, and it includes economic empowerment applicants. There is a one-to-one ratio for equity licenses to non-equity licenses, and Boston must maintain an equal or greater number of licenses for equity candidates. In addition, qualifying equity applicants will have access to support and technical assistance. Number two, the Equity Fund, and this is major. We are the first city in the Commonwealth to create a fund to help and assist equity applicants. In addition to having support and technical assistance, those who qualify for our new equity program are eligible for this support. This equity program, again, in our city, is designed to prioritize local companies with diverse ownership from disproportionately impacted communities. Number three, criteria for judging all applicants. While considerations will be given to things like parking and community input, these criteria are also heavily weighted toward communities of disproportionate impact. Number four, a public registry. This ordinance creates a public registry for applicants and businesses so that aspiring entrepreneurs and concerned residents alike understand how businesses are rolling out in our city. Number five, Boston, the Boston Cannabis Board. This ordinance calls for the creation of a new board to oversee the entire process with an eye towards equity. And I am thrilled to share that Mayor Walsh will create a Boston Cannabis Board through an executive order as a next step and companion piece to this legislation in the coming weeks. In addition to these five points, this ordinance requires greater scrutiny of applicants so that we know who the owners are and who the investors are and anyone with equity or controlling interest in the company. We are requiring full disclosure so that we can make sure that larger companies are not enlisting people of color to be the face of the company without any power or ownership in the company, and then trying to receive the benefits of being an equity applicant. While this ordinance is groundbreaking and game-changing, it is just one step that we must take to ensure equity. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the council and the mayor on additional reforms that support equity in this industry. It is not enough to have half of all licenses for equity applicants if the smaller, local, diverse companies that we are trying to help are still locked out of the opportunity to start a business in high-revenue generating areas like the Fenway, Copley, Downtown, and the Seaport. There is much more work to do. I look forward to following up with council hearings next year to be sure that this ordinance is being implemented with fidelity and is achieving the desired outcomes of creating an inclusive economy in the cannabis industry by prioritizing small, local, diverse businesses from communities disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. The future hearings will be, that will give us an opportunity to make further recommendations and even offer more amendments if needed. Some economic empowerment applicants in recent days have raised concerns that this ordinance doesn't do enough for them. Some have asked that they have exclusive rights to move through Boston's process. And while this ordinance explicitly includes economic empowerment applicants, for example, language was added in the criteria of the equity program, it is important to recognize that for every person who knew to apply for this special status, there are many others who did not know to apply during the state's very brief application period. Should other worthy applicants from poor communities of color, who have also been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, be penalized and left behind? We cannot afford to fall prey to the oppression Olympics, pitting those with economic empowerment status against those who are disproportionately impacted but didn't know to apply. We cannot afford to perpetuate the cycle of disenfranchisement by locking out those who are most harmed by mass incarceration and the war on drugs. We cannot afford to squander this opportunity to create an inclusive economy and put in place a process that prioritizes equity and offers the clarity, transparency, and accountability that both aspiring entrepreneurs and concerned residents deserve. Finally, we cannot afford to be stewards of the status quo. Instead, with this ordinance, we can begin to repair the harms and right the wrongs that have been inflicted by mass incarceration. With this ordinance and with the work that follows, we can ensure that the cannabis industry will be inclusive of those harmed by prohibition of marijuana. We must be bold as we lift up those who have been left behind. I urge all of my colleagues to vote for the passage of this ordinance in its revised form. But first, I leave you with this quote from one of my sheros, Ella Jo Baker. And she says, "In order for us, as a poor and oppressed people, to become part of a society that is meaningful, the system under which we now exist has to be radically changed. It means facing a system that does not lend itself to your needs and devising a means by which you change that system." So, in closing, I invite you to join me in changing that system so that it is more equitable and it is more just. Thank you again. Many thanks to the mayor, thanks to all of my colleagues, thank you to everyone who participated in this process. Thank you, Councilor Janey.
Thank you very much, Councilor Janey. Councilor Takem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor Janey, for those words, for your work, and for pushing this forward so that we have the ability to discuss, consider, and vote on what is truly landmark legislation for the city of Boston, for the Commonwealth, and for the country. This is important. This is critical to addressing issues of equity in our community, in our city. I want to thank you for your persistence on this. I want to thank the mayor and his administration and their entire team and our colleagues for working through this. This is complicated legislation. It's the first of its kind. That takes a lot of work. That takes a lot of back and forth. But we're here. We're here now. So, to you, this is incredibly outstanding, particularly as a first-term member of the Boston City Council. So, congratulations and thank you. We are having, because of this, a transparent, predictable process for people. Nothing is perfect, nor will it be. But this is such a huge step forward for licensing and permitting the cannabis industry in the city of Boston. But it's not just about words. We have set real standards and guidelines for making sure this is a more equitable industry in the city, and also through the creation of the Boston Equity Fund. We are putting real money behind it. I've had the privilege of the last year of having a series of discussions with many of the people in this room, with the Black Economic Council of Massachusetts and others, around barriers to equity in this industry, and over and over again, along with the licensing, its access to capital. So, creating an ultimately $5 million equity fund is going to be critical to putting this legislation, these ideals, into action. We're being practical about this. We're addressing it. As I said when we first introduced this legislation, for the first time, certainly in my life and probably in all of ours, there was a completely new industry in the city. A completely new industry that, as you said, is going to be a billion-dollar industry or a multi-billion-dollar industry, that is a highly regulated industry, that it gives us a unique opportunity as a city council to set standards around, to regulate, to say, you know what? We're going to have some rules around this. We are going to use this as an opportunity to create equity, to address the astounding wealth gap in the city of Boston. This, quite frankly, I believe, is one of the most important pieces of legislation we're going to consider, certainly this session, probably over the last few years, and it can make a really important impact. So, I know there's a lot to be said about this. I know a lot of my colleagues would like to speak as well, who have worked so hard on this under your leadership, Councilor Janey. But I'm incredibly proud that, and I believe this is my third or fourth-to-last city council meeting as the city councilor, to be able to consider this bill, to certainly be voting in support of this legislation. I look forward to seeing how it changes the fabric of the city, not just in the cannabis industry, but across our society, across our community. So, I look forward to a strong yes vote on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Takem. Councilor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to join with my colleagues here and to say that I'm so proud that I'll be voting for this ordinance. It is thorough and comprehensive. It is the result of many, many hours of work of this body and, and community members and so many organizations and activists that you have presided over and led. And most of all, I mean, this is a huge deal. It is a huge deal, because this is what every piece of legislation should accomplish, that we're not, as a city, just relying on the best hopes for equity and for shared prosperity, but really taking up our full power to require it. And so, most of all, you know, this should have been in place long ago, frankly, for Boston to take full advantage of, of the opportunities in this new industry. But we are here now because of your leadership, because of the chair in stewarding this, because of so many folks in this room. And I'm just, most of all, I'm proud to support your leadership on this, that... I remember the, the early conversations when this was just a season of how to address the problem, to here, and from that, all those months and that very long process, you have led with determination, with vision, and always centering community, and let that be the model for everything that we vote on. But I want to underscore just how monumental this is, that we're taking this on today. So, very proud to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Councilor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition to docket zero-three-one-five. As stated in the November ninth edition of the Boston Herald, I believe, and my, a lot of my constituency believes, that the Cannabis Commission Equity Board would be better served if the board was overseen by the Cannabis Commission control. This would help to avoid corruption and devious behavior. The way it looks now, it would be a slush fund for people that are running for public office. I believe that the proper place for establishing an equitable commitment, an equitable regulation for the cannabis industries in the city of Boston or in any other municipality should be for the Cannabis Commission to have control over community contracts. As the Boston Herald article stated, lawmakers are now urged to act on a bill that would give the Cannabis Control Commission the authority to regulate the controversial contracts between pot shops and municipalities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Garrison. Thank you, Councilor Garrison. Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I stand here in full support of my sister-in-service, Councilor Janey. I stand in full support of your leadership, of your vision, of your ability to sit at the table and have the difficult conversations from the perspective of equity. I, I support your vision and your ability to have not only those difficult conversations, but to make sure that you bring people together and along in those conversations. I think that your ability to gather folks, to talk about this, and also to, even when folks were in complete and total opposition to you, your door was always open. And I think that speaks not only to the leadership, but on this particular controversial issue, and let's be honest, it's still controversial to a lot of people that marijuana is legal and that we are setting up a regulatory framework around it. And still, you were there from the very beginning, also with Councilor McCarthy, to start that conversation. So, I want to thank you for that. I also want to say, I see the immediate benefits of this transparency, the registry, and thank you for adding that, because when we had to deal with a neighborhood conflict in East Boston, we saw that without that transparency, we were going to only continue those conversations. that transparency, we were going to only continue those conversations where folks having no idea who was looking at what property, where they were, if they were a half mile from each other, that they would continue to put themselves out there and be stuck in this situation. So I think that you're setting up a way for us to be able to operate more efficiently as a city as well with this legislation. I not only support this, but I support the process in which you got it going. So I want to say thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you so much for being able to have this conversation. And I wanted to echo your point. The conversation doesn't begin and end today.
Yeah.
Right? At the end of the day, at the end of the day, this conversation has started in a big way today. But how this truly becomes equitable, how people truly feel seen, is a years-long, generations-long conversation. And we will continue, and I am committed to be with you, to have that conversation, wherever you want to have it, with whomever you want to have it, to make sure that we do live up to the spirit of this legislation. So thank you so much for your leadership, and I 100% support it.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to add my voice to the chorus of congratulations to my dear colleague and friend, the District 7 City Council, for her leadership on this and her persistence on this. I think few would dispute the fact that many issues around oversight in the cannabis industry at the state level, while well-intentioned, have often been plagued by a series of fits and starts and uncertainty. And I think it's all the more important for cities to assert themselves in the way that the District 7 Council has put forward here. It's something that's smart, that makes sense, it's fair, it's open, that allows the community to continue to have a voice. This is a strong piece of legislation, one I am proud to support. And while people often correctly criticize government for moving at a glacial pace, few things in life worthwhile are done easily. So thank you for sticking with it. Thank you for bringing people together, to the chairman as well for his great leadership, and all colleagues who've been part of this, but really under your leadership, Council Janey, well done.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise, I have a question that I'd like to go through the chair to either the maker or the committee chair. Thank you. I want to know what, how does, what does this mean for the existing organizations that have host community agreements? For you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Baker. I'm going to defer to the-
I wasn't able to ask this question.
Oh, didn't mean to turn your mic off. I apologize, Council Baker. Council Flaherty, as the chair-
Thank you, Madam President, and to the, to our colleague. So the issue of grandfathering was brought up at both the hearing and working session, but there was not agreement as to whether or not that could be included in making sure that it's open, that it's transparent, that it's predictable, and that the advice was that they stay with the process, they continue to do the community meetings, they continue to do the outreach, they get zoning going appeal meetings. So all that's still in play, and they're going to continue to advocate on behalf of their existing establishment. There was going to be no effort to sort of grandfather the handful or so to give anyone type of, any type of perceived advantage, if you will, just given the recent climate.
So, another question. So the companies that did the-
Let's allow the conversation to go back and forth, clap at the end. Thank you.
Another question to Madam Chair. So, so the companies that, that did the work for years, three years, I mean, I think I was three years ago, we had a vote on the floor here for, for an organization. I know the councillor from West Roxbury had a vote when, when the process was in front of the city council, when, when we were involved in it. So, so those people have to go back to the beginning. If you, if you pass zoning, that doesn't mean anything now.
Just a point of clarification, Council Baker, you referring to medicinal marijuana applicants, or-
All the applicants, all the applicants that got host community agreements, because there are, there's 10 or 11 of them.
There's one in my district currently, so all of them, okay.
So those, those are now in void?
Council Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. There was a lot of discussion around grandfathering. As you know, I had it in my original ordinance. I think it is important that we recognize that applicants are being asked to change up each time we move forward with a different process. So initially, there was the letters of non-opposition, then there was the host community agreements, and now we're putting forth this ordinance. My understanding from speaking with folks in the administration, we still, as many colleagues have already pointed out, as well as myself, coming up with legislation is a process that continues to evolve over time. Right now, immediately, we have another opportunity through the mayor's executive order to insert some more language in, particularly maybe around a grandfathering clause or other things that we want to see around this board. And so I would suggest that there is more opportunity to continue to craft, whether through the executive order or through follow-up amendments moving forward.
So amendments that would happen on the floor here today?
What's that?
Amendments that would happen today, today on the floor?
Whenever we would put amendments out. It could be through after reviewing and seeing if we have this desired outcome, yes.
So at this point, at this point, if, if, thank you. If, Council Baker, you want to offer up some amendments, I can take a brief recess. You can draft those if you want to.
I think I would like to do that.
Let's take a brief recess. Thank you. Thank you, just had to make sure that this was back online on the media front. Council Baker has a question around, obviously, current applicants with, who have executed and gone through the process and through various stages to have a host community agreement executed with the city of Boston. I'm going to go back to the chair of the Government Operations Committee with ordinance since to make a clarifying point on those who have current HCAs or host community agreements. And, and I'll have him speak to that, and then I'll go back to Council Baker. Thank you.
So just after a brief conference and discussion with the administration, so anyone that currently has an HCA, arguably, they're all set. They've moved on past the city process. They're now, obviously, it's at the discretion of the state. So there was no need for any grandfathering language around anyone that currently has an HCA. They have an HCA in their hand, they've moved past the city process, they're now at the state process, and good luck to them at that stage. But there's no grandfathered language in any, anyone that currently has not gone through the HCA process is in the process, just like everyone else. I encourage them to have their community meetings, meet with their local elected officials, sit with their district city councillor, you know, reach out to community advocates and community groups, work with the administration. Put your application in. There's a lot of folks that haven't even submitted their application over to Tintin Mass Ave. I would suggest that that all-
Right, depending on the outcome of this ordinance, obviously, it would dictate what that process is for future or folks currently in the system. But those who have executed a HCA, to Council Baker's point, are not affected by this legislation because of the funding.
They're ahead of this, they're ahead of this, and they're up at the state.
Exactly. Thank you for that clarification, and thank you, Council Baker. Anything else, Council Baker?
No, no, thank you, I'm good.
Anyone else have comments with respect to this ordinance? Okay, at this time, Council Flaherty, who is the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 0315. All those in favor of passage, I'm sorry, in a new draft, thank you for the clarification. All those in favor of passage of Docket 0315 in a new draft, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabe George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabe George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Garrison.
No.
Counselor Garrison, no. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zakeham.
Yes.
Counselor Zakeham, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm informed by the clerk that the vote is 12 to 1. Docket 0315 has been passed. Going back to our original order of business, so moving on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1585, message in ordinance of amending the city of Boston code. Ordinance says chapter 17. The purpose of this amendment is to allow the Inspectional Services Department to recover costs for conducting inspections outside of normal business hours by charging a fee for such inspections filed in the city clerk's office on November 18, 2019.
Docket 1585 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1586, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $13,520,000 in the form of a grant from the Urban Area Security Initiative, federal fiscal year 2019, awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the mayor's office of emergency management. The grant will fund the continued support of unique planning, exercises, trainings, and operational needs that will assist in building enhanced and sustainable security capacities to help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats of acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive C-B-R-N-E incidents.
Docket 1586 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1587, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,406,550 in the form of a grant from the federal fiscal year 19 Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Grant Program, awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the mayor's office of emergency management. The grant will fund comprehensive planning for housing needs following a disaster in the Boston region covered by this grant.
Docket 1587 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1588, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $170,000 in the form of a grant for the Clean Vehicle Project, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, to be administered by Central Fleet Management. The grant will fund installation of hybrid fuel systems, systems in existing city of Boston light-duty vehicles.
Docket 1588 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks.
Docket number 1589, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $71,355 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the mayor's office of emergency management. The grant will fund the increased ability to effectively provide prompt and accurate public information and alerts. It will also enhance capacity across the Commonwealth to recover from acts of terrorism, as well as natural, technological, and intentional hazards.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise today to suspend and pass Docket number 1589, as the assistant clerk stated. This money will go directly to intelligence to recover from acts of terrorism, as well as natural disasters. So I'd like to have this passed.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, who's chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1589. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1589 has been passed.
Docket number 1590, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $63,960 in the form of a grant for the Clean Vehicle Project, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, to be administered by the Central Fleet Management. The grant will fund installation of hybrid fuel systems in existing city of Boston heavy-duty vehicles.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1590 is a $63,960 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy. It will allow the city to install hybrid fuel systems on several existing heavy-duty pieces of machinery in the city's central fleet. The grant is part of the Commonwealth's Green Mobility Group Purchasing Program, which allows municipalities to retrofit existing vehicles with green technology. Retrofitting our fleet is one step closer to our city's carbon neutrality goals, and the city and taxpayers of Boston will save money, less expense on traditional fuel. This is something that's really exciting. It's a relatively small grant for the size of our fleet, but I'm asking for suspension of the rules and passage so we can get to work straight away. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. At this time, Council O'Malley, who is the chair of the Committee on Environment, Sustainability in Parks, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1590. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1590 has been passed.
Docket number 1591, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,825.36 in the form of a grant for Tiny Tots, awarded by the Leahy, Hollerin, Arrenberger, and Rosendale preschool programs, to be administered by the Boston Centers for Youth and Families. The grant funds partial reimbursement of the cost of preschool programs at Leahy, Hollerin, Arrenberger, and Rosendale Community Centers.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1591 is a grant of $50,825.36. This is partial reimbursement for preschool programs that are at the Leahy, Hollerin, Arrenberger, and Rosendale Community Centers. It will primarily reimburse costs associated with preschool, as well as the Tiny Tots program. Both of my sisters attended the Tiny Tots program at the Longfellow School, which is now senior housing. It became senior housing by the time I was old enough. I was very jealous that I couldn't do Tiny Tots, but despite that, I hope we can pass this grant today to make sure that we can take care of kids who get that great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. At this time, Council O'Malley, who's chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1591. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1591 has been passed.
Docket number 1592, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $9,975 in the form of a grant for the Preservation Assistance Grant, awarded by the National Endowment for the Humanities, to be administered by the city clerk's office. The grant will fund purchases of flat files and supplies for preservation of oversized materials.
Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask for suspension and passage of Docket 1592. It's a grant that will fund the purchase of flat files, as well as oversized materials that will be administered by the city's clerk's office. So through our clerk, assistant clerk, I wish it was more.
Wish it was.
Unfortunately, but for those that do not know, the National Endowment for the Humanities is an independent federal agency that was created back in 1965. It's one of the largest funders of humanities programs in the United States. And these grants typically go to cultural institutions, such as museums, libraries, colleges, universities, and obviously archives. And as we all know, our clerk's office is the gatekeeper for the city's ICAR. So it's a very important function of our clerk's office, and that's why I wish it was more. But in the meantime, its money, I'm sure, that is very much needed and will go to immediate use. So as the chair of Government Operations, I'd like to ask my colleagues to move for suspension and passage so we can get this $9,975 in the appropriate hands to carry out the function of archives in the city of Boston through our clerk's office.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, who's chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1592. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1592 has been passed.
Docket number 1593, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,000 in the form of a grant for the Non-Matching Scholarship Grant, awarded by the National Art Program Foundation, to be administered by the Office of Culture, of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund National Arts Program Award Reception.
Council Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to speak in support of Docket 1593. This is a tiny $1,000 grant to fund the National Arts Program, the National Arts Program Awards Reception. The city of Boston National Arts Program exhibit was held on October 18. The city of Boston National Arts Program exhibit was held on October eighteenth. The exhibit is still on display, and it's right here on the third floor of City Hall. I respectfully ask that the rules be suspended and that we pass this document. Thank you.
Just so you know, new councilors that are coming here, I have to get this alphabetical. So I'm like way down there. You might have to move.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document one five nine three. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Document one five nine three has been passed. Mr. Clerk, if we could read documents one five nine four through one six zero eight together? Thank you.
Document number one five nine four, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Wen Wen as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Document number fifteen ninety-five, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Matthew Blumenthal as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May first, two thousand and twenty-four. Document number fifteen ninety-six, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Arian Allen as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May first, two thousand and twenty-four. Document number fifteen ninety-seven, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Alice Richmond as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May first, two thousand and twenty. Document number fifteen ninety-eight, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Helen Pillsbury as an alternate member of the Aberdeen Agricultural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Document number one five nine nine, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Bly as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six zero zero, message in order for the confirmation and of the appointment of Nikita Burns as a member of the Aberdeen Agricultural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number sixteen oh one, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Sharon Kaylee as an alternate member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Document number sixteen oh two, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Susan Trowbridge as a member of the Saint Petholf Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six zero three, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Douglas Miller as an alternate member of the Saint Petholf Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Document number one six zero four, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Barbara Winnerholm as a member of the Saint Petholf Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Document number one six zero five, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Paul Wright as an alternate member of the South End Landmark District Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Document number one six zero six, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of David Shepherd as a member of the South End Landmark District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six zero seven, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Hunt as a member of the South End Landmarks District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And document number one six zero eight, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Fabian D'Souza as a member of the South End Landmark District Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Documents one five nine four through document one six zero eight will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, if we could read documents one six zero nine through one six two three together? Thank you.
Document number one six zero nine, a notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Michael Wilson as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one zero, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Michael Parker as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one one, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of John P. Sullivan as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one two, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Ann Herbst as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one three, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Alice Richmond as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one four, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Kristin Plesner as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one five, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Russell Preston as a commissioner to the Air Pollution Control Commission for a term expiring September first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one six, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sarah Lee as a commissioner to the Air Pollution Control Commission for a term expiring September first, two thousand and twenty-two. Document number one six one seven, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Leah Cam heat as a trustee to the Boston Groundwater Trust for a term expiring March first, two thousand and twenty-one. Document number one six one eight, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with chapter six of the ordinances of nineteen seventy-nine relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Document number one six one nine, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with chapter six of the ordinances of nineteen seventy-nine relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Document number one six two zero, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from seven AM on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, until eight PM on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Document number one six two one, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from seven AM on Sunday, November seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, until seven AM on Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Document number one six two two, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the Charles Town Urban Renewal Plan, project number mass R dash fifty-five, with respect to the creation of parcel nineteen B. And document number one six two three, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the South End Urban Renewal Plan, project number mass R dash fifty-six, with respect to the creation of parcel seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Documents one six zero nine through one six two three will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees, document zero one eight eight.
Document number zero one eight eight, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Document number zero one eight eight, an ordinance relative to the establishment of an independent commission on equal opportunity and the elimination of systemic bias in the workplace submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to be placed on file.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to have this matter placed on file, obviously through you and we hear from the lead sponsor, who did great work on this. And for everyone's edification, this was the proposed ordinance that sought to create a commission on equal opportunity and the elimination of systemic violence, systemic bias. The proposed commission, at the request of the mayor and/or my majority vote of the city council, can initiate an independent review of a city department in question, establish standards and protocols for a request or call for an independent investigation, set internal rules and procedures that will govern the commission itself, exercise subpoena power, and issue binding policy orders to a city department. As I mentioned, it was sponsored by our colleague, Council Lady Redwoods, in conjunction with our president, and also our other colleague, City Council Josh Zachem, and was referred to the committee back on January the sixteenth of two thousand and nineteen. We held a hearing on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen. A public comment was taken. At the hearing, it was discussed, we discussed the intent, the purpose of the proposal, and the importance of having an independent mechanism to handle discrimination investigations in the city of Boston and a system to monitor remedies to address systemic violence. We heard from Evanda Carvalho, the new executive director of Human Rights Commission, who provided testimony on behalf of the administration. The committee also heard testimony from Rebecca Pontek's Esquire and Pontek Law LLC and Lauren Sampson, from City Rights Fellow, as well as lawyers for civil rights, on the importance of having laws and systems in place to prevent and correct discriminatory practices. The committee expressed support for the revival of the HRC as an independent entity and recognized that the HRC provides a fair and reasonable avenue for individuals to file discrimination complaints and provide a way for examining and developing policies and procedures to eliminate systemic violence, increase diversity, reduce workplace harassment, and promote equal opportunity in the workplace. So through the chair, I'd love to hear from the lead sponsor. It was very gracious to have the hearing, as well as to have the matter placed on file.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I think what we are asking that this matter be placed on file and its proposed legislation to create this commission be placed on file because it is more of the crossing of two pathways with the same goal. At the end of the day, when we were thinking about the systemic bias and coming up with this commission, we heard after the fact that the mayor was bringing back the Human Rights Commission, that does that work already. And so we had filed this and then learned through the state of the city that this was a goal of the administration. We're happy to see that that goal of the administration has come to closer to fruition with the hiring of Evandro Carvalho to head the new HRC. And so he will need a budget, he will need individuals to support him, and he will then bring back a commission that already does independent review, can look at systemic bias, has subpoena power, has the ability to do mediation, has the ability to also investigate all of the city council, city departments for any issues that we are concerned about, but has a bigger jurisdiction already by law for every employer in the city of Boston with six or more, excuse me, employees. So there's already an entity on the books that has a larger jurisdiction, that has more power, and the ability to do investigatory matters. And that's something that would be accessible to all city employees about their current employment or any employee in the city of Boston. So why reinvent the wheel? Instead, our conversation, we wanted to be clear that we're on the same side and we're trying to get something done. But it's on paper right now, and we stand firmly with the administration in making sure that paper really becomes a fully vibrant and well-funded Human Rights Commission. I'm not, and I don't think anybody in this room is confused about the huge task before Commissioner Evandro Carvalho, not only working with the new commission, I'm bored, I'm sorry if I mis-titled him, he's Executive Director, I think, Executive Director Carvalho. The amount of work that he has to do to get this up and running so people can file complaints, the staff he needs to hire, and honestly, the jurisdiction is literally the city of Boston and every employer here. So he has got a lot before him, so our goal is to work with him. Just to remind folks, the HRC already has expansive jurisdiction. It protects parents where the state does not. It protects a lot of folks in labor unions where the state does not necessarily have a category for that. So we have wonderful progressive legislation, and it was brought, we actually created it to protect a lot of our family and friends in the LGBTQ community before, in the nineteen eighties, to make sure that they were protected in the city of Boston. Other things, though, that we want to continue with this particular HRC, it does not include pregnancy discrimination, which was passed by the state. We need to make sure that the laws actually match. Also, in order to file a complaint with the HRC, we have a hundred and eighty days. The state gives you three hundred days, so there's a disconnect, and I think at the very minimum, we should have a longer filing period so folks can come forward. And also, I would like to talk about the enforcement mechanisms of the HRC. Not only can they provide a forecause determination, much like the MCAD, which would then go on to trial and so on and so forth, but what other forms of enforcement and how will the city work with them, especially when we're dealing with city employees who may have been found to have acted in a systemic bias or have done something inappropriate on the job. So I just see this as work before us. I want to thank the administration for bringing back the HRC. I want to thank, excuse me, Executive Director Carvalho for testifying. I want to thank my colleagues, also President Campbell and Counsel Zachem, for working with me on the initial filing. And again, I recommend that we put it on file and work to make the HRC as vibrant as possible.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you and our good colleague from East Boston for partnering on this hearing order, and of course, the committee chair, Counsel Flaherty. It's important to have these discussions, I think, as much as anything else, bringing them to the forefront, finding out what resources we have as a city, as a city council, as a community to address these important issues. I was very heartened to see Director Carvalho there, in his new role, with the support of the administration, certainly moving forward, he's going to need the support of this body, both through a budgetary process, through an oversight process, and also, as Counsel Edwards was saying, making people aware of this resource here in the city, of this expansive authority that we have enacted through, excuse me, through that ordinance to put into place. So we have it. It's reactivated. Needs to make sure we have the resources for this entity to move forward. We also need to make sure that people are aware that this is a resource, not just employees of the city of Boston, but employees in the city of Boston. We need to continue to work on that. So I've been excited by the progress already, look forward to continuing this work, and want to thank both of you for co-sponsoring, really leading the charge on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Zachem and Counsel Edwards, for the partnership. Document zero one eight eight will be placed on file.
Document number one five five three, the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veteran and Military Affairs, to which was referred on November sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Document number one five five three, order approving and appropriation of six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-two, two hundred and eight dollars from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for the projects described in the attached order. The Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund commissioners met on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, and voted to approve these projects. It is my belief and that of the commission that these projects will ornament the city's streets, streetways, squares, and parks as Mr. Brown directed in his will in the year eighteen ninety-two. Submit a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we held a hearing on document one five five three, order approving appropriation of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars from the Edward Brown Fund for various projects on November twelfth. The Brown Fund commissioners met on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, and voted to approve described in the document, you know, requires a vote from the city council to approve the funding for these projects. The projects include one hundred thousand dollars for the design of a sculpture celebrating the Dr. Martin Luther King and Coretta Scott King on the Boston Carmen. Thirty thousand dollars for the Coconut Grove Memorial in the Bay Village. Hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight for the Holocaust Memorial to upgrade its landscape. Ninety-eight thousand dollars for the Massachusetts Fallen Heroes Memorial on the South Boston waterfront. One hundred thousand dollars for the reconstruction of the green space located in Commonwealth Avenue in Brighton. Twenty-five thousand dollars for the creation of a new light for the Samuel Morrison Sculpture in the Back Bay. Hundred thousand dollars for the redesigned reconstruction of green space surrounding the Old West Church. Twenty thousand dollars for improvements around the Southwest Florida Park in the South End. Thirty-three thousand, sixty dollars for the installation of a fence in Gateway at Healy Field Park in Rosendale. I believe that all the projects in this document are valuable to our city. They improve our public spaces and maintain our history in our city. At this time, Madam President, I would like to recommend passage of this document so that these projects can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. At this time, Counsel Flynn, who is Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of document one five five three. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Document one five five three has been passed. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Document number one three three eight, order for a hearing to discuss pedestrian crossing signals, traffic calming, and vision zero.
Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a great conversation, and I'll defer to the sponsor to chime in more, but it was very well-attended, and the Transportation Department presented some updates on their Neighborhood Slow Streets program, what their plans were for the recent increase in funding available for street safety from increasing the parking meters and from upping the level of parking fines as well. They have hired additional staff to focus on connecting the city with the MBTA. They have hired additional staff to focus on connecting the city with the MBTA as well as really thinking through ways that we can bring more of our design and engineering in-house rather than having to put that out to contract and to bid every single time. The strong sentiment from colleagues is that that is all great progress, we certainly need to do more and we need to do it faster, and I think they heard that loud and clear. But was happy to have that conversation and I'll defer to Councilor Flynn for more.
Thank you, Council Wu. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Council Wu for chairing this important hearing on Monday and thank you to our panelists who came and testified, including our professionals from the Transportation Department as well. Pedestrian safety is a top priority for all of us. It is an important issue for all neighborhoods in the city. I know that we are all committed to Vision Zero, the goal of having zero serious or fatal crashes. I know we still have a lot of work to do, as Council Wu mentioned. In the hearing, we talked about potential infrastructure improvements that can help with pedestrian safety. In particular, I brought up the issue of signal timing for pedestrians. I often noticed that there was a turn signal for vehicles at the same time that the pedestrian crossing light is on. We also have talked about other infrastructure improvements like speed humps, raised crosswalks, rapid flash beacons, or pedestrian crossing signals, curb extensions, road diets. I've heard from residents in and out of my district about their experience as pedestrians, cyclists. And in these hearings, we heard suggestions, some public testimony about some of the spots that residents would like to see improvements on. I look forward to continuing working with our administration, residents, and advocates on improving pedestrian safety through traffic calming measures, slower speeds, and enforcement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to rise and thank my colleague and friend, the Council for District 2, for his partnership on this, as well as the Chair, the at-large Council for Rosendale, for her leadership in quick turnaround in a hearing. It's appropriate that we're discussing this after voting on the cannabis ordinance because it's another example of an emerging industry, an innovative industry, that didn't exist 10, 20 years ago. And while I'm not only a proponent, a consumer of the innovation economy and rideshires and use them and see the incredible purpose, I also think that cities and towns, municipalities have an opportunity to make sure that the system works better. That can be something as simple as designated pickup and drop-off areas as the city's been piloting, designalization as referenced by the District 2 counselor, could be geofencing on certain areas, it could be the piece around consumer protection as it relates to rides, fare surges, et cetera. 10% of traffic in Boston is from a rideshare, is from a TNC, is from Uber, Lyft primarily. And we've seen the number of operators grow by at least 25% the last several years. So we're talking about nearly 150,000 trips per day just in Boston proper. A few of these originate, a few of these drivers originate in Boston, but obviously, as we talk about traffic, as we talk about congestion, as we talk about the effect that has on us as an economy, as a city, this is part of the issue. So it was not only incredibly worthwhile to have the opportunity to sit down and discuss these issues, it's important to continue as we begin the new council come January to have these conversations, to come out with some common sense oversight rules and regulations that will not hinder this industry or make it overly onerous or overly expensive for a consumer, but really help complement it and help foster better success, but smarter success. So thank you to all my partners and look forward to continued work in the new year. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, Council O'Malley, you were speaking on the docket...
Rideshares?
We'll bring that to that docket when we get there. Listening, I was thinking, I think he's speaking on the docket that I'm going to call on about two dockets, so thank you very much.
I apologize, Madam President.
I sort of looked around, I was thinking, I think he's talking on a different docket, but God bless you, thank you.
This is like when you're called on by the teacher in class and you're not paying attention, so apologies to colleagues, but I...
Thank you very much. And so at this time, docket 1338 will be placed on file. And now moving on to docket 0647. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0647, order regarding text amendment to Boston zoning code relative to fair housing and integrated communities.
Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a lot of hearings in the last couple of days, and so there's lots of overlaps. This one was a great conversation as well. I'll defer to the main sponsor, Councilor Edwards, for most of it. It sounded like, as in many of the proposals from the council side, that there is agreement on the administration side, that this is something that the city should do, there's some discussion about the timing of it and what pieces should come first, but the representatives from the BPDA and from the Fair Housing Commission all stated that they certainly believed in codifying, affirmatively furthering, sorry, furthering affirmative fair housing requirements into our zoning code. The disconnect was whether the council goes ahead and passes it or if they sort out what that would look like in terms of regulations first and waiting to marry those two. So if there is room, I think the other two dockets I would ask to be placed on file. Let's keep this one in committee just to keep the opportunity for some movement before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Wu. Council Janie, really? Council Edwards, you have the floor.
It's okay, I've been called Erica before, so I'm used to not actually being called by my name, being a twin, so I don't take it as personal.
Council Edwards, you have the floor.
And I have no problem being confused with Council Janie. So I introduced this zoning amendment, this text amendment, to actually assure that the city of Boston is legally compliant with its obligations to affirmatively further fair housing. This is the federal law, this is our obligation as a city of Boston. Indeed, we have been sued under this obligation when we have fallen short of our legal requirements. The jurisdiction is that not only do you assure that discrimination does not happen in our housing stock, but that you actually proactively try to prevent discrimination in financing and purchasing and renting our housing stock. And it is not, it is, excuse me, it is about that discrimination impacting folks with disabilities, poor people, people who have children, people who are racial, ethnic, and also assuring that folks, that there are no concentrations of wealth. Those are all ways in which we are trying to assure that we are affirmatively furthering for housing because we see housing not just as a roof over your head, but as access to opportunities. Another component of the law is to make sure you remove those obstacles. Again, these are not aspirations, this is the legal requirement that the city of Boston has been sued under and has adopted in DND and in BHA under the late Bill McGonigal's leadership. He helped to integrate our Boston housing, and it was because of this particular law and this requirement. So here we are today, trying to make sure that the third leg of our housing and the third leg of our planning, the BPDA, is also compliant with the legal obligations of affirmatively furthering for housing. And how does the BPDA become compliant? It's through planning. That's what they need to do. And we're asking, when the plans come in from developers, that they ask the appropriate questions, that they look at that. Already, they're required to look at seven different things, some of which are transportation impact, environmental impact, urban design, tidelands, and site plan. They're already required to do that, ask questions about it, ask about the impact of it. And they have to adjust with the standards of each one of those as our environmental standards 10 years ago is different than today, and we require developers to meet them. So we're asking and saying that the impact on folks with disabilities, families, vulnerable populations, is no more important and no less important than those very categories that we look at right now. And so when we had the back and forth, which I thought was a great back and forth, a lot of advocates came in, said they support this amendment in our zoning code because it lives beyond the administration, it lives beyond the willfulness or the charitable heart of any particular administration. We want the commitment in writing that we firmly believe in affirmatively furthering for housing, and we need that in our zoning code. So I don't feel that there was any real disagreement with the administration about that. I think where we had a different understanding is the process to get it done. While there's some good vibrant conversations with the group on affirmatively furthering fair housing in a report that's coming out with Professor James Jennings specifically on that, what I did not want is for perfection to get in the way of progress. And while the BPDA wants to do this zoning amendment, they didn't want a commitment without actually understanding what the data points would be to analyze this, without actually understanding how we would look at the ways in which we are affirmatively furthering fair housing. That was their argument. And I said, well, you already look at unit size and you know the impact on unit size if you have a bunch of studios and one bedrooms, that's basically telling families they're not welcome. You know the impact and you can track census tracts with incomes of folks based on their ethnic background. You can look at all of those data points right now to assess how a plan impacts somebody. You just aren't required and you just don't do it. So we're asking you to fall under that requirement. And I understand their hesitation in terms of setting a standard that they may not be able to meet completely, so I suggested that we pass this zoning amendment with an effective date one year into the future, so that we are very clear in passing this zoning amendment or getting it out of our committee onto the zoning commission and with their support, that we are committed to this in writing and one year from now, we will have the standards to assess all of those impacts on those vulnerable populations, just like we assess the impacts of transportation on those populations, we assess the impacts of environmental protections on those populations, and I believe we can do it. And what I heard from them is a commitment. I want to commend my colleague, Councilor Flynn, who had one of the best data point suggestions, and that was, do you ask, do you even ask the developers if they've been sued before for discrimination? Do you even ask if there was an issue beforehand? We actually do that now with the Boston jobs policy, right? When we look at certain things with how people have been treating and hiring folks. So it's not that the city doesn't have that conversation, but fair housing, who has that data, because they receive the complaints from housing discrimination, is not talking to the BPDA right now and saying, actually, no, that developer has done a horrible job, has been sued several times, has done the exact opposite of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And those are the conversations that need to happen and will happen under this zoning amendment. And I wanted to commend my colleague, Councilor Flynn, for that suggestion. So my goal, my hopeful goal is that this zoning amendment gets done with a year before its effective date to assure that we have the most robust, clear standards and assuring that we are, well, that we're living up to what we're saying that we value in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. At this time, docket 0647 will remain in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1055, order for a hearing to discuss transportation network companies operating in Boston.
Council Wu, you have the floor.
So we've touched on it a little bit already. The other half of the sponsorship team here, if he wants to delve in anymore. This one was very well attended and honestly, there was a ton of overlap content-wise with the hearing on pedestrian safety anyway, so we covered a lot of the same themes and it was the same administration representatives at the table, so we kind of got to have a two-part conversation there. Most of it was focused on waiting for the state legislation to pass, which they said was very close and would add additional surcharges to bring Massachusetts more in line with how other states regulate Uber, Lyft, and TNCs, but also see more of those resources come back to Boston. One of the takeaways was that there could be potential not just for the city to be designating curbside pickup and kind of preventing people from double or triple parking as much, but also to talk to municipalities in the greater metro area about some potential home loan petition that would carve out even more regulations for the cities that are affected most by TNCs such as Boston. So Council Baker had brought up some important points in that conversation as well about the economic impact in terms of the workforce and taxis, so there was a commitment from the administration there as well that progress was being made on conversations with the taxi industry and the medallion situation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Council Wu again for chairing this hearing yesterday and to Council O'Malley for being a co-sponsor. Also, thank you to our panelists and those that attended, especially the transportation police officials from our city. TNCs such as Uber and Lyft now play a significant role in our transportation system, and the data has shown that there are 42 million rides that began in Boston in 2008, or over 115,000 rides per day. As we all know, Boston is in the midst of a congestion and traffic crisis. It's clear from the data that we need to include TNC in this conversation. Many constituents have also brought up concerns relating to public safety and Vision Zero due to reports of vehicles speeding through neighborhoods, often unfamiliar with our roads as they may be coming from Rhode Island or New Hampshire, or cars pulling over in the road. I know that in the hearing, we spoke about legislation at the State House, as Council Wu mentioned, which would increase the surcharge on TNC. I know that the city is still actively looking to pickup, drop-off spots, geofencing, and other ways to improve traffic in terms of TNC. This additional traffic also brings pollution and raises concerns about climate change and sustainability. As we all know, Chinatown has the worst air quality in Massachusetts. There are other concerns as well, consumer protection issues. I look forward to continuing this discussion with all the stakeholders. I want to say thank you to Mayor Walsh, his administration, as well for their leadership on this important issue. We need to have better data sharing with Uber and Lyft, and we need to revisit this conversation. Uber and Lyft were invited to the hearing yesterday, they chose not to come. I'm hoping, Madam President, that at the next session, that Uber and Lyft representatives will be here so that we can get some answers from them on information that could be helpful to the city, especially on pedestrian safety-related issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. At this time, docket 1055 will be placed on file. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1624, Councilor Seoma offered the following.
Just realized he's gone.
Order for pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the city of Boston for fiscal year 2020 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the commissioner of revenue pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further that pursuant to Chapters 59, Section 5C, as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value for all Class 1 residential parcels in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Council Seoma, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is an annual requirement that we adopt classification so that we can avail ourselves in our residence of the maximum residential factor now set at 35% in the past couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 1624 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1625, Councilors Wu and Edwards offer the following: Resolution in support of divesting independent retirement fund, retirement systems from fossil fuel companies.
Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, could I suspend the rule to add Council O'Malley as an original co-sponsor?
Any objection? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Council O'Malley as a third original co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. So the council, as over my time on the council and with Council O'Malley, had sort of two parts of this conversation several years ago focusing on fossil fuel divestment specifically, and then more recently with renewed push under Council Edwards' leadership to include a broader range of divestment from harmful industries and specifically reinvestment in important initiatives. We came to a similar conclusion in both parts of that conversation, which is that the state blocks a significant portion of what the city would want to do. There is much that we can do and we are seeing steps towards diversify, sorry, divesting the city's money that's sitting in bank accounts and being intentional about where that is invested. But when we're talking about the pension fund in particular and the parts that are tied up with the state's PRIM, the teachers' pensions, for example, cities and municipalities are not able to make their own decisions about that. So there is a bill up at the State House that would just undo that piece of it, which would let cities make that decision. It is sponsored by Representatives Jay Livingstone and Dylan Fernandez on the House side and Senator Mark Pacheco on the Senate side. So this resolution is just in line with all of the hearings and working sessions we've had on the council to request, to officially get the council on record supporting the ability for cities to make that decision. Thank you. Oh, sorry, request suspension of the rules and adoption today.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Just briefly, and also to explain why I support this, so not only did we have a robust conversation built off of prior conversations that we've had under the leadership of Council Wu and Council O'Malley, but we, part of the point of this resolution is to make sure that we can speak with our money and speak with our retirement without having to ask the permission of the state and giving that freedom for municipalities to be able to move their money where their thoughts, where their passions, and where there's...
where their passions, and where their understanding of social justice is. Again, this is about the conversation we had recently, talked about divesting from private prisons, from weapons, and from making sure along, also with fossil fuels. And that we would have to ask or be blocked consistently by the state from even those industries or those conversations about those industries is what is wrong with our system today. So this proposed statewide legislation is a wonderful fix to that, adding to the conversation that we also had, not only adding additional industries, but it was not just divestment that we need to talk about, but also investment. So where would the money go? Because we believe in a robust, fully funded retirement system for all of our city employees as well, including ourselves. So it's not enough to just remove the money. It's being able to invest in industries that are thriving, that are good for our economy, good for our city, and good for folks in Boston.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, thank you to my dear colleagues and friends, the At-Large Council from Rosendale, the District 1 Council from East Boston, for their leadership on this. Very briefly, it's been a long meeting. I know we have more things to do, but I just want to reiterate a point I often make when talking about climate issues, and that's every fiscal conservative ought to be an environmentalist as well. That is particularly true as it relates to investing and divesting. You know, when the At-Large Council from Rosendale and I first did a hearing on it back in 2015, it was still seen as something outside the mainstream to divest from fossil fuels. The real turning point was 2017. That's when clean energy reached a critical turning point. According to Forbes Magazine, growth in cost reductions across the sector far outperformed expectations based on policy framework alone. Reductions in costs, increases in scale, and technology improvements have fundamentally changed the dynamics of the clean energy market, to wit, to install solar panels, PV panels on your house has gone down in price 70% since 2010. And that's continuing to decrease as the technology becomes more available and easier and smaller and more effective. 2017 was the time that global investment exceeded $333 billion in clean energy companies. The amount of combined fossil fuels and nuclear energy, $144 billion. It's almost, it's more than twice as successful performing in the market. Renewable energy sources becoming increasingly more effective. And one of the reasons why we've been working on community choice energy is because we can actually increase the portfolio while saving ratepayers money. In 2017, Clean 200 Companies, which is a ranking of the 200 largest publicly traded companies that are involved in the clean energy sector, generated a ratio of return of 32%. Fossil fuel companies and fossil fuels, this is all according to the S&amp;P Standard Poor's Index, generated a ratio of return of 15.7%. Finally, in 2018, New York City was the first major city in the United States to divest from fossil fuels. They divested their nearly $200 billion pension. London followed suit. Later that year, Ireland was the first country to follow suit. Interestingly enough, New York State did not follow the leadership of New York City. And as a result, this is according to The Guardian, this isn't fake news. According to The Guardian, the result was a loss of approximately $17,000 per pension for New York, if you worked for the state of New York versus if you worked for the city of New York. Just two months ago, $11 trillion has been committed to divesting fossil fuels. As this continues, the rate of return will only get better. We should do this because it's the right thing to do. We should do this because it sends an important message. We should do this because it will help the clean energy sector grow. And we should do this because we will get better returns for all of our city employees and retirees. So thank you to my dear colleagues and friends for their leadership and forward to passage and continued work on this.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. At this, oh, actually, would anyone like to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Council Baker, Council Siomo, Council Sabi George, Council Flaherty Flynn, Council Garrison, Council Janie McCarthy, Council Zachem, as well as the Chair. At this time, Council Wu, Edwards, and O'Malley seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 1625. All those in favor of suspension and adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1625 has been adopted.
Docet number 1626, Council Edwards offer the following: Resolution in opposition to a rule proposed by the National Labor Relations Board.
Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I first wanted to thank my colleague, Council Baker. We had a robust conversation about student organizing and Council Baker helped to navigate that conversation where the entire chamber was filled with folks from all different labor sectors in support of graduate students forming unions on their campuses. And that, it was a result, 60,000 graduate students have formed unions since the Obama administration interpreted the NLRB regulations to allow for graduate students to organize and become part of a union. Today, the Trump administration is proposing to strip away that power for graduate students to organize and to hold their institutions accountable for their mistreatment. Let's be very clear, these are workers. They are also students, but they are workers first. They are grading the papers, they are teaching the classes, they are in our labs, they are coming up with patent obligations, they're working on things worth billions of dollars that the school then is able to contract out. And at the same time, they're not necessarily guaranteed their pay of $15 an hour. They're not necessarily given vacation, and many of them face internal pressures. I had a woman come to me before I was in politics, who was a graduate student, and she wanted to know about her rights, considering that she was pregnant and she was in PhD program. And her professor, who was also in control of her program and her 20 years of investment in education, said because she got pregnant, she was married and she was forming a family, but because she chose to do that, she didn't really demonstrate her dedication to her PhD and studies. And she was concerned about what her rights were, that everything she had was for naught. She had no place to go. By the university standards, she was not considered a worker. She was not able to go to the MCAD or to deal with all of those different issues in her mind, and that's what she was advised. So she was wondering what her rights were. And what we're saying is that graduate students are workers and those rights should be understood for them just as much as for anyone else. The request of the graduate students who testified here was asking for a neutral third-party arbitration on campus so they can go to for issues with discrimination, for wage theft, for all of those different issues. Particularly, the students who are on conservative campuses that are gay and lesbian and felt that their institutions had already taken out stances against their forming of gay and lesbian alliances, and they felt that they were suffering from discrimination. In many cases, the union on other campuses was all that they had. So today, I'm here to say that we oppose, radically oppose, any stripping of the ability for workers to come together and form a union, including workers on our college campuses. Unfortunately, at the hearing that Council Baker held, all the invited institutions, Northeastern, BCBU, and Harvard, chose not to come and said they chose to send letters that ironically noted, we're going to wait on this. Excuse me, I will exclude Harvard from that. But the other institutions said, we will wait on this because we're waiting to see what their status is as unions. So we won't negotiate with them or recognize them because, well, the NLRB is still determining if they're going to recognize them. That's hiding behind the Trump administration, and they should be ashamed of themselves. They should be ashamed of themselves for doing that. And that's a hypocrisy for many of them promoting themselves as liberal bastions and calling us out, in many cases, on the policies that we have in Boston as the city of Boston, and they can't, and they want to hide behind the NLRB and the Trump administration. So I'm asking my colleagues to support this resolution in completely opposing the proposed rule change that would strip those workers of their right to form a union. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I want to say thank you to Council Edwards for her leadership on this issue. I think it was a four-hour hearing that we had one night, and we listened to all the comments from a lot of these graduate students. One student in particular was a woman from China who was a student studying for her PhD, and she was working, and she was worried about what impact her immigration status would have if anything happened to her employment. So not only are we impacting the students, but we're impacting their immigration status as well. As we know, a lot of Boston's economy is based on colleges and universities and international students. That's not the reason I'm supporting Council Edwards' proposal, but it's about fairness for everybody, making sure that all workers are treated fairly, are treated with respect and dignity, including our immigrant graduate students that also are here contributing to the Boston economy, and they also need some protection as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Add your name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Council Flynn, Council Baker, Council Siomo, Council Flaherty, Council Sabi George, Council Janie, Council McCarthy, Council O'Malley, Council Wu, Council Zachem, as well as the Chair. At this time, Council Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 1626. All those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1626 has been adopted.
Docet number 1627, Councilors O'Malley and Flynn offer the following: Resolution in support of an Act for Utility Transition to Using Renewable Energy Future Act, H2849 and Senate 1940.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 6th, earlier this month, the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utility, and Energy held a hearing on H2849 as well as S1940, An Act for Utility Transition to Using Renewable Energy, otherwise known as the Future Act. I'd like to thank the sponsors of this bill, Senator Cynthia Cream, Rep. Lori Erlich, as well as Representative Christina Minucci. I'd also and especially like to thank the incredible advocates from Mothers Out Front, these two of whom are with us today. Thank you for your leadership and your partnership. And I particularly wanted to notice someone who is not with us in the building today, but that's Jackie Royce, an amazing advocate whom all of you know. She has been a tireless advocate. She was actually, I believe, going to this hearing or going to some climate-related bill, was hit by a car. She's going to be fine, but she's in the hospital right now. And if she's watching, we love you, Jackie, and we just wanted to thank you for your leadership and send our best wishes for speedy, speedy recovery. I'm particularly proud of the momentum for this bill and grateful again for my partnership with the District 2 City Council from South Boston for his great leadership on this, because this is not dissimilar from one of the first ordinances I passed as a member of this body. With some of you, I think many of you weren't on the body at the time, but it was the Gas Leaks Ordinance that we passed back in 2016. It was signed into law by the mayor in 2016. However, the ordinance was not implemented because utility companies sued it to block it on the grounds of preemption, meaning that the state law would supersede city law. We've had sort of a mixed bag of success through the judiciary system, but many of the provisions that we outlined in our ordinance, you know, having worked so closely with Mothers Out Front and some such great advocates, are included in the Future Act. The Future Act essentially creates a roadmap for gas companies to transition to modern renewable energy thermals by 2050. It addresses the neglected gas system's current leaky pipes and safety challenges. The act will improve coordination for gas leak repair between gas companies and cities and towns. It will give municipalities an effective voice in proceedings before the DPU by permitting municipalities to participate in adjudicatory hearings related to their service areas. It will also allow individuals and municipalities to pursue remedies with the DPU as an alternative to the courts for claims for property damage included during gas company roadwork, as well as damage to trees from gas leaks. Gas companies would have to notify the local fire chief within an hour finding a dangerous gas leak, and they would be required to be audited annually for safety performance as well as leak reports. Now, a lot of the meat of this proposal seems common sense. And one of the frustrating things from my vantage point, many of you, is that the many utility companies, not all, many have been fighting these common sense reforms. How do we have better coordination when we open up a street to lay fiber optic cables? How do we have better coordination when we've got water and sewer work happening? A lot of that doesn't exist. This will help us fix the leaks. This will help us move and transition to renewable energy sources, which I just articulated why that's not only good for the investment, it's also good for the ratepayer as well. And this will, very simply put, build a safer Boston. It addresses public health, it addresses consumer protection, it addresses needless, ongoing roadwork, it's quality of life. It's every issue that we were sent here to debate and work on really wrapped up nicely. I know that often I speak on environmental issues, and it's something that's obviously very, very personal to me and I know to all of you, but this is something that's beyond just a gas leaks bill, a renewable energy bill, as truly as a quality of life bill that will have incredibly positive impacts, not only in Boston, but on the 350 other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. So thank you again to District 2 Council for his partnership and leadership. After other folks want to weigh in, we'll be asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of the resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council O'Malley, for including me as a cosponsor in this resolution. I think Council O'Malley covered all the aspects of why this bill is important. I also want to highlight the incredible role of Mothers Out Front on addressing major issues in our city, throughout greater Boston, especially on gas leaks in our city. And I know that this bill is something that they advocated for because it will not only help with the issue of gas leaks, but it will also create a path for gas companies and gas workers to transition to renewable energy. I had the opportunity recently, several months ago, to join the Mothers Out Front in looking at gas leaks that are happening in the downtown area and in the south end as well. They're playing critical support, critical role in making sure that we address these ongoing issues. We have thousands of gas leaks in our city. They're killing our trees, they're having a major impact on our environment and economy as well. I just want to say thank you to my colleague and friend, Council O'Malley, for including me. And again, I want to say thank you to Mothers Out Front. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Council Edwards. Raise your hand. Council Edwards, Council Baker, Council Siomo, Council Sabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Janie, Council McCarthy, Council Wu, Council Zachem, as well as the Chair. At this time, Councilors O'Malley and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 1627. All those in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1627 has been passed. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docet number 1628, Council Campbell for Council Siomo.
Council Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1628. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1628 has been passed.
Docet number 1629, Council Campbell for Council Siomo.
Council Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1629. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1629 has been passed.
Docet number 1630, Council Campbell for Council Garrison.
Council Garrison seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1630. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docet 1630 has been passed.
Docet number 1631, Council Campbell for Council Garrison.
Council Garrison seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1631. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1631 has been passed.
Docet number 1632, Council Campbell for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1632. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1632 has been passed.
Docet number 1633, Council Campbell for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1633. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1633 has been passed.
Docet number 1634, Council Campbell for Council Edwards.
Council Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1634. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1634 has been passed.
Docet number 1635, Council Campbell for Council Edwards.
Council Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1635. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1635 has been passed. So there is, I'm informed by the clerk, two, so for Docet 1636 and Docet 1637, a substitution of language. So on the agenda, there are four names, but in the actual order, Council Flynn's office wanted three names. Any objection to substituting these two for what's currently in the agenda? No objection? Wonderful. If we could read, I guess, the substituted language, you don't have to go through the entire thing, Mr. Clerk. It just removes one name, which is Anna's name, from both of these two substitutions.
So Docet number 1636, Council Campbell for Council Flynn.
Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1636. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1636 has been passed.
And Docet number 1637, Council Campbell for Council Flynn.
Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docet 1637. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docet 1637. The ayes have it, Docket 1637 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are five late-file matters. You do not have them because they are all personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the first late-file matter into the record.
First late-file matter filed by Counsel Campbell for Counsel Sabi George.
Counsel Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter has been passed.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Campbell for Counsel Sabi George.
Counsel Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has been passed.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Campbell for Counsel Janey.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has been passed.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Campbell for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the fourth late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The fourth late-file matter has been passed.
And personnel order filed by Counsel Campbell for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the fifth late-file matter has been passed. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter for today's consent agenda, which will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objection, the matter is so added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements? Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
I have one positive announcement and one announcement of the passing of one of my, one of the folks in East Boston, constituent, or former constituent of East Boston. On the positive note, the Edwards Empowerment Fund had its first gala, and thank you, I wanted to thank Counsel Flaherty for supporting and sponsoring a table of moms, and we gave away four scholarships for trade school, for English classes, and for nursing school, and for community college, all to local moms with two to three kids each who are dedicated to our community in East Boston. It was a huge success for us, and I wanted to thank, I know those of you who couldn't make it, sent wonderful regards. We will continue this, I think, now new tradition in making sure that we honor the Maverick Street mothers and the organizing of parents through scholarships for those who want to make, have that second chance and go on. So I'm beyond excited, and I look forward to all of, I want to congratulate all of the scholarship winners, and I wanted to thank all the committee members who are, folks with the YMCA, folks who work with the parents, principals. Tanya Del Rio also helped make, select the very difficult decision of selecting who could win. So I was no part of that, I just got to hand out the check, so I'm fine with that. And raise the money, but I'm fine with that. On another note, I just wanted to acknowledge a great loss for those of us in East Boston, actually in Revere and Winthrop, the passing of Joe DiMilio. He was one of the owners of Off the Boat, which used to be on, by my house in East Boston, it is now in Revere, and the outpouring of grief for his loss, 49 years young. And I just want to acknowledge that, take a moment to express my condolences for Antonetta, his now widow, and just acknowledge that his passing is a great loss for us.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to just notice, note that the Conference Committee has agreed to language for the Student Opportunity Act, which many of us have worked on, and that is today happening up at the State House, and we're hopeful, many of us are hopeful that the governor will sign the bill soon. This bill will invest $1.5 billion in long overdue funding for our public schools, ensuring that we'll be able to improve learning conditions for special education, early English language learners, and low-income students. While this bill does not maintain local control over district plans to close the achievement gap, I'm very pleased that we are one step closer to having a fully funded and more equitable Boston public schools, public schools across the state. Second, I'd like to note that this week is National Hunger and Homelessness Week, and this annual campaign takes place the week before Thanksgiving to raise awareness about neighbors who are experiencing homelessness and hunger. We know all too well that the city's experience, is experiencing a crisis of housing and displacement due to the shortage of affordable units, and we have to face the reality here that one in 11 people and one in nine children in Massachusetts also struggle with hunger. In Boston, 18% of our people on average are food insecure. Food insecurity impacts Bostonians disproportionately and dramatically, from 8.7% in West Roxbury to 27.4% in Roxbury. Our neighborhoods should not determine the life outcomes, and yet in 2019, they still do, and food security is a big part of that, and food security and homelessness are inextricably tied. And although I've spent a lot of my time working on the issue of homelessness, food insecurity often dips into those conversations. So this week here, before Thanksgiving, I would like to just make special note that today is National Hunger and Homelessness Week, or this week is, and that both issues are of deep concern to all of us here and our residents across the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Last spring, I held our council luncheon, and I invited representatives from MCAN, the Mass Climate Action Network, as well as MAPC, the Mass Area Planning Council, and we talked about the International Code Council and how municipal officials have an opportunity to weigh in with their vote. There's been yeoman's work done by MCAN and MAPC. We've registered nearly 500 entities across the Commonwealth alone, which is a significant number in what is obviously a very low turnout, wonky, technical election, but we are soon upon Election Day, which will be this Friday. So from 12 to 3, we're going to be hosting in the Curly Room opportunities for all of us to vote. Staff can help us do that. It's somewhat wonky, but we will walk you through the process if you are so inclined to join us. I will be providing pizza and soda for anyone who shows up, but please join us and thank you again. It's really important that this opportunity doesn't come up very often, and the work that's laid, that has been built up to this moment means that we can actually really help form and really develop some incredible international building standards that is so critical, particularly in coastal communities as it relates to resiliency. So hope to see you or your team members between 12 and 3 on Friday, and thank you to Jessica Morris from my team for coordinating it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Any other announcements? I just want to make a couple. One, today marks the 20th International Transgender Day of Remembrance, which was actually started here in Boston after the murder of a woman back in 1998, in Alston, actually, and her name was Rita Hester. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that today marks the 20th anniversary of that remembrance and of International Transgender Day of Remembrance. Most people forget that some of these critical events started right here in our city. We also know this disproportionately affects women, but of course, women of color and black women. So just wanted to acknowledge that. I also wanted to acknowledge, on I guess a little bit more positive note, the Boston Civic Leaders Summit that I'm hosting this weekend at the EMK Institute, or EMK Kennedy Institute, and the JFK Library. It is Saturday, it is free, it is all day. I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues, as well as your incredible staff, for really getting this out to the Civic Association and resident leaders all across the city of Boston. The summit is designed not only to thank the folks who step up every single day and volunteer their time for free, to advocate for the issues within their community, but to do it in partnership with each and every one of us. So it's a way for us to thank them. The day will also offer substantive workshops around leadership, racial equity, how we take care of ourselves as leaders, as volunteer resident Civic Association leaders. Staff and council staff, central staff have signed up to also join us for that day, so thank you. You guys are also partners in the work, the staff that serve us and serve with us, and of course, central staff. Our lovely Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley will be one of the speakers who will sort of close us out that day, and other speakers as well. So even if you can stop by for a little bit, that would be wonderful. If you stop by in the beginning, I can acknowledge you, people can see you and wave at you. We had to RSVP for this event, and we're expecting almost 500 people. And the great thing about it, it brings civic association leaders from all across the city of Boston together at a time when, frankly, coming out of Washington, folks want to divide us or separate us. And so it's a great opportunity, and I think it's quite timely. So thank you to each and every one of my colleagues for supporting the effort. Of course, Thanksgiving, enjoy it, have a great one. But last but certainly not least, I have to acknowledge one of my team members who was leaving us, and her last day is on November 29th, and I told myself not to cry, then it was like, girl, just express whatever you feel. And that is Caroline, who is sitting over there with her lovely green turtleneck on and her lovely glasses. She has been with me before I became Counsel Campbell, when I was just simply Andrea. She was my field director on my campaign. I hired her, as well as my campaign manager, two incredible women who had never worked as a field director and as a campaign manager ever before. And it was important to me to give opportunity, not only to women, but to people of color who work with us in the trenches to put us in these positions. I will share a story really quickly. When my campaign manager went on a trip, she left me with Caroline to say, this is, you know, Caroline, we were connecting, and I was, you know, obviously contemplating hiring her, and I was like, come back, come get this girl. No, no, no. And, you know, by opening up my heart, by becoming more vulnerable, by healing through some really painful pieces of my own story, I have grown to love her, to respect her. She has been a partner in the work, one of my confidants. I'm so proud of the growth in you, from what I saw on day one to where you are now, and as she explores some new opportunities and opportunities to grow in various skill sets of things she started to develop in our office, wanted everyone to know just how special she is to me. And each of us obviously share that with our staff members. So Caroline, thank you. Thank you for sticking with me during the very hard times, and, you know, as, and I'll name it, a young white woman, to go into Dorchester, to go into Mattapan, to go into a district, predominantly a district of color, and to door knock, and she knows my district inside and out, and knows the residents personally. It's a testament to your character, they respect you, my residents are calling me and be like, where is she going? How dare you let her go? And they love her. And it's just an example of, when you get to know people, you put aside what you think is different, whether it's demographics or anything else, to know each other's stories and why we do this work. Beautiful relationships come out as a result. So I know my residents are just devastated, of course, my team members as well, to lose her, but very proud of you. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Thank you. And there'll be a reception next week. We, of course, I think, already sent information out, invite all of you, particularly the staff members of all the counselors, because there is a bond between staff, to join, to celebrate, and to have a wonderful time. And again, enjoy your Thanksgiving, not only to colleagues, staff members as well. I'd like everyone out at this point to rise as we guest council members and staff adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel O'Malley, Mark Joseph Sark. A Lieutenant Joseph Finneran. For Counsel Janey, Dora Viola Daley. Andrew Swain. Valerie Rose St. Louis. For Counsel Flaherty, Ronald Myers. For Counsel Flaherty and O'Malley, Rose Pappas. And Counsel Edwards, remind me, because I don't see the person you just spoke of, who was not listening. Joseph DiMilio, who was just spoken of by our colleague Counsel Edwards. For Counselor, for the Chair, Luke Walker. And for the entire council, this is our Counsel-elect, who will be joining us, Kinsey Box's grandfather, John Beamish Lister. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, December 4th, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.